Tank.
They dump them in those big, uh...
Drop tanks, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just did a big, uh, water shop, uh, water zone.
That takes a lot of time, doesn't it?
It does, well, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and good evening to the Rockingham County Planning Board meeting regularly scheduled for this day, May 9th, 2020, New, and which I call to order now. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Your Father, we are grateful to gather in this planning board meeting of the Rockingham County, the state of North Carolina, and we're grateful to be able to consider the needs of the community, the citizens of the community, and the, and the people that are served here. We pray that thou will bless, that we might know what thy guided in the decisions that we make, that we might be respectful, understanding, and be able to come to a meeting of the requirements of the city and the county and the state of North Carolina regulations, and know how to bring those together for the benefit of all who live in Rockingham County. Guide us, Father, in all that we do, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Board members, case number 2022-09 has been voluntarily withdrawn for rescheduling or rescheduling to another public hearing at a future time, so if you'll just scratch that one off the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the remainder.
Someone?
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. There is no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Our next item is approval of the January 10th, 2022, uh, meeting minutes.
Approve the January 10th, 2022 minutes?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the January 10th, 2022 regular meeting agenda, uh, minutes. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like, sign. There being no opposition, the minutes are approved. These are the guidelines we expect for speakers at this meeting. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board chair prior to speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chair. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If need, if needed, the board chair reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After the public comment period is completed, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by a board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. At this time, we're going to call on staff to present our first case, 2022-08.
Members of the board and members of the public. So our first, I will make a note, just to repeat, case 2022-09 has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda, just to repeat. If you're here for that case, it's not being heard tonight, it's been postponed indefinitely at this point. So we begin with case 2022-08. It's a zoning map amendment, a rezoning. It's a straight rezoning from residential agricultural to residential mixed. Tax pin indicated it's at the, essentially at the juncture of New Nham Road and US 220 on two borders. But, yes, where the Huntsville Township crosses over 220, that little portion where you would think it would be New Bethel, but it's actually Huntsville. This is a nonconditional straight rezoning. Here's a vicinity map that shows its location in the southwest quadrant that we know is the hot residential quadrant right now. The zoning map shows a mix of uses in the area. You can see all classes of residential zoning are present here, residential mixed, protected, and residential agricultural. There are some agricultural uses nearby. There are also some highway, commercial, and light industrial uses nearby. Given that this is the 220 corridor, that would be fitting with the history of zoning and development along that corridor. This is our environmental map. There is a fairly large pond on this parcel, and there is some, I've looked at it, some fairly steep topography in and around the pond that will likely have to be preserved in some fashion as open space, because it'll be hard to build on, I believe. But that's just a note to make as far as the only environmental features that apply. It is not located in a protected watershed. Lastly, this area is located squarely in the G3 land class. G3 land class in the land use plan has been targeted for mixed development, including medium density residential development. Mixed-use centers and corridors is essentially the title of the G3 land use class. It includes recommendations for mixed residential development where water and sewer are available. Among commercial and mixed-use districts along the 220 growth corridor, it is recommended amongst the different types of zoning districts, we've begun to include this statement. It's primarily listed at, for industrial and commercial sites, but is also applicable to residential sites connectivity, greenway connectivity, where it's possible, and that sort of thing is generally handled at the technical review committee. Again, I want to make clear, this tonight is a case of a nonconditional rezoning. The applicant has requested a nonconditional rezoning. The board may impose no conditions, the board may request no conditions. The applicant is not offering any conditions. Secondarily, we are approving the rezoning only. We are not approving a subdivision tonight. This rezoning only approves all uses allowed in the residential mixed district if that's the decision that the board makes. Moving from RA to RM, all uses in both classes of land need to be considered when making that decision. With that, I'll answer any questions, or maybe you.
Any questions for Mr. Cochrane? I think we're good.
Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know there's been a, a lot of interest in this particular case, as evidenced by the number of contacts that have been made to the county planning department. This board has been made aware that there's even organized groups that are in either opposition or support of this application. As Mr. Cochrane said, we're here to do a straight rezoning. We're not here to, uh, pass judgment, or approval, or denial of any kind of subdivision or other use for this land, just the rezoning. My inclination here is to have the people that were sent mailed notices. Can everyone that received a mailed notice, please raise their hand? One, two, three, four. Keep, keep your hands up if you got a mailed notice. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, eight of you. Do what? My inclination is to have you people speak first, since you're most directly affected by this, uh, application. Those that are indirectly affected means that you live more than a thousand feet from this request, and will hear you secondly. Amongst the people that were either mailed notices, or that are going to be affected indirectly, if it looks like your comments and concerns are basically the same, it would be helpful if you wouldn't get up and just repeat what the previous person said, because it won't add any more weight to what we decide. We need to hear it once, and that's all we need to hear it. So if you'd like, I'll take a 10-minute recess here and give you people an opportunity, the people that were mailed notices and those that are indirectly affected, time to kind of meet amongst yourself and either select a spokesperson, or at least nail down what you want to talk about in, to a, a common question for everybody. So at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess for you to do that. Okay, we're back in session. The first speaker that signed up is Matthew Johnson. For the record, would you please state your name and address?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Matthew Johnson, 1760 Simpson Road. I come to you as a citizen of Rockingham County, but also as an urban planner, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, with over 20 years of experience in local government administration. I deal with the issues that you're hearing about tonight on a daily basis, and I value your service to our community. In our area, we understand that there are nearly 2,500 new housing units either approved or in the planning stages within a quarter mile of the zoning proposal you have before you this evening. We understand the need for growth, and we're not wholly against growth. Rather, we simply want smart growth, and for the planning board and the county commissioners to use some discernment in allowing for good design. It's well-known that these developers are only interested in Rockingham County because they can get in and get out quick, make quick money, and that the county does not have the planning mechanisms in place to ask for good growth measures like its neighbors in Guilford County. We understand that the county's comprehensive plans have called for growth along the 220-73 corridor. Again, we're not opposed to responsible growth, but we ask the county to protect our community by showing shrewdness and asking for good urban design. Can't have that in a straight rezoning. Presently, the county is unable to support such a development. Water and sewer capacities don't exist, police and fire capabilities do not exist, traffic ends, infrastructure is inadequate, and reliance on NC DOT to fix it is unreasonable. The county lacks adequate staffing in both their planning and building inspections and permitting departments. No offense to the planning staff, they just need extra help to deal with this type of growth, and at this pace, and our schools are not adequate to support the growth being approved at this time. These improvements will cost the county millions of dollars, and residential growth alone is incapable of providing a return on their investment of those tax dollars. The rezoning request for residential mixed is before you this evening, but we don't see any mixed-use components in the proposal, only substandard tract housing. The comp plan calls for this area to be in the G2 control growth transect and the G3 mixed-use centers corridor tract transect, but again, there's nothing being presented tonight that would guarantee that the developer's not going to develop this property with anything other than generic substandard housing. Finally, this is an issue that's dear to me, the application for the rezoning does not meet the UDO's criteria for a complete application. There was not a submission, a submittal of a detailed statement of all circumstances, factors, and reasons, including a statement as to the proposed reasonableness for the rezoning, how it's consistent with the county adopted plans, compatibility of the rezoning with the property and surrounding area, and the benefits and detriments of the proposed rezoning for the landowner, the immediate neighbors that are here this evening, and the surrounding county community as is required per Section 33.02 zoning map and text amendments of the UDO. This item, at the very least, should be continued until the applicant can comply with the legal requirements of the rezoning process. We respectfully request that the staff ask the applicant to reconsider a conditional zoning. I know you said many times, this is a straight rezoning, we under, I understand what that means, where if it was a conditional rezoning, the developer, the staff, the planning board, and the county commissioners might have a ability to better mitigate concerns of the citizens. Thank you.
What's that name, is that Allison? Is there an Eddie Allison? I may be mispronouncing your name.
Yes, sir, there is Eddie Allison.
Okay, you're next.
Good evening, my name's Eddie Allison, and my current physical address is 4115 Kernersville Road in Winston-Salem. However, I own the 60 acres that is directly adjoining this property that we're looking at, and I was hoping to build a house here before I found out that they were going to be putting six houses per acre on this land, and so, uh, I didn't, I hadn't planned, and I don't want to start off on a bad foot, but I do take exception for the, actually, planning staff to give their review that was obviously out of context, as we talked about this sheet, where they said that you could see that there is every type of rezoning here. If you look at this map, over 99% of this area is residential agriculture, so to just to make something out of context that says, "We have every zoning," I think you should look into that. I also take exception to the fact that we said this, we're here to do a rezoning. My understanding of the rules and bylaws is we're here to discuss the rezoning and think about it. We're not here to do the rezoning. We're here for the applicant to provide their information, which, by the way, the Chair said would go first, but I haven't seen the applicant, so I don't know what's going on with that person providing the information. All the information came from Rockingham County Planning, which seemed like it was already in full support of this, which I think is egregious. However, I digress on that point. I will back up just a couple of things. Mr. Johnson said Huntsville Fire Department, I don't know if anybody's talked to Huntsville Fire Department yet, are they going to be able to support this? Your police, the sheriff, I've seen here, how, how many sheriff officers do we have? How many police officers do we have come to support six houses per, what kind of sewer do you have water? Talked about, we don't impact a watershed. This goes to Jacobs Creek, which then goes to the Dan River, which then goes to Roanoke Watershed, which is the largest watershed in North Carolina. They're talking about the pond there, and said they went out there. Well, if they went out there, like they said, but kind of skimmed over it, majority of this topography goes into that spring-fed pond. How is that three minutes old? One more minute, I'm sorry. And then, so just to skip on, I'm sorry. Let's talk about, let's talk about crime. As you know, if you're going to build six houses per acre, these houses are going to be low-quality built, they're going to be for lower-income people, which generally, economics and population density, based on FBI and Department of Justice statistics backed up by peer research, peer research is one of the major contributors to crime, and the NCVRW, National Crime Victim, their urban and rural victimization studies show that rural is by far less crimed than any other places.
Could you please cut off your cellphone?
Can I get? I'm saying, can I get some time back?
Yes.
Okay.
Please cut off your cellphone.
Okay, I guess nobody has cellphone. And then, the Housing for Urban Development, HUD, states that crime not only affects the victim and family, but the entire community.
Hold on one second, sir. Could you please cut that off?
Sorry. Apologize, uh, well, I don't know. But anyway.
I'll give you a little more time. Go ahead and finish.
Appreciate that, uh, sir. HUD says crime not only affects the victims and family, but the entire community. That's why the people that are outside the 1,000 feet are here. We've all seen it before. So in closing, I do not want you guys to answer these questions, I want you to think about these questions. Do any of you guys live in a population density with six houses per acre? Why not? So that's two questions. And third, in one to five years, is this the type of development do you want to see for this county? Or do you want to see reasonable-built homes, one home on a half an acre? Like, when we were growing up, we had subdivisions, I had friends in subdivisions, decent houses for hard-working people on different, not just something some developer threw together and got out of Dodge. So with that, I think I yield. Again, my name's Eddie Allison, feel free to call me or whatever.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Could we have someone for staff identify this gentleman's property, where it's located in relation to the subject property?
The map up.
Yeah, well, actually, I, yeah, the, I had a representative, my contact, Mr. Lynn, today, in discussing my property, which is this one right here, that great big one that, over one-third of this property. Matter of fact, these guys tried to buy my property at less than what I can buy this property for now, if that tells you what kind of, how.
Okay, okay. Lynn, could you put it up for us?
Look at, I said, these, these guys tried to buy my property, and I said, "No," because they were trying to buy my property for the same that I anywhere else.
If you look at the map and you see the shaded portion, the property immediately to the upper right corner, to the northeast, is...
Northwest, Lynn.
Northeast.
I apologize.
That's okay. No, I get it mixed up with the east and west, too. No, to the northeast is Mr. Allison.
Be this one right here.
Retangular piece north of the...
Immediately north and west.
All right, thank you, Lynn, appreciate that. Okay. Carolyn Ryerson?
I'm Carolyn Ryerson. I live at 3749 Vance Street Extension in Reesville, and I own a piece of property off of Carlton Road that butts up close to that.
Okay. And what is it you'd like the planning board to know?
Well, I would really like for the planning board to consider everything that these two gentlemen have said, and as far as them wanting to rezone, has anybody contacted the Department of Transportation as to what kind of highways and things is going to be needed to accommodate all those people? Thank you.
Ms. Ryerson, just so that you know, I think the ultimate plan is for 220 to morph into I-73, it's going to become an interstate highway. How far off in the future that is, I guess that depends on the state of North Carolina, Department of Transportation, and what their long-term plans are for, for making that happen, but that is the plan. It's one of the reasons why the G3 corridor was identified as a potential rapid-growth area. Harvey Sharp?
Yes, I did receive a letter, I'm just, in the neighborhood. Oh, yeah, did we go down?
You can still speak, sir. Again, I just ask the audience to keep in mind that what these people are saying, and I almost killed myself here, uh, keep in mind what they're saying, and if it pretty much fits how you feel, then we don't need to hear it again, is what I'm trying to say. Oh, Mr. Sharp, if you would, please give us your name and address.
My name is Harvey Sharp. I live at 8730 North Carolina Highway 65. Also own property at 242-248 Griffin Road, which is completely agricultural. Not anywhere touches this development. These people asked me to come and speak about the situation. The problem I've had is I, my two farms have a Collie Brook subdivision in the middle of them, and in the last phase that they created of this, when they cleared all the trees, rubbed all the stumps, brought all the Carolina red dirt, soil, and all this is drained into my pond. The problem I've had, I started last year in June 24th, with the country, the county's soil and water here in Rockingham County. The first thing they did is they didn't have a department to handle this situation, so they sent me to Department of Environmental Quality in Winston, which handles these situations. In that time, since, from June now to now, I have dealt with at least three different inspectors. They are like y'all, they have a lot of personnel turnover, they have a lot of area to cover. My main thing is, when I talk to the inspector, the builder, the residents, my cousin, my farm, all of us went to meet with these people, they were told, I was told, they were doing everything that the county required them to do. The problem I have with it is, I understand that. The problem I have is, if my pond is muddy every time it rains a half an inch, they're not doing enough. Now, I don't know if that means there's, what I understand, there's not enough rules and regulations in place to handle this. You do not have any buffers. You have a buffer for agricultural to commercial, you don't have a buffer for residential to agricultural, okay? That's the first thing. There is no requirement, they are putting, they put all their septic link lines right up to the property line. Everything that's been paved, there's no curb and gutting, all the water runs to the lowest point, which is in to the pond that's on this property, which runs into my property. Anything that doesn't go into this pond runs around, down the hill, into the creek, into my pond. But they're doing everything they're required to do. My thing is, there's not enough regulations in place. If this is, this pond's been here forever, now it's muddy, they're not doing enough. There needs to be a situation of people and rules in place. When they mess up something, they need to fix it. That's, that's my, the whole thing. But I have dealt with any, everybody and all inspectors from here to Winston to Raleigh, and if they're telling me that they're doing everything they're supposed to do, I don't have any avenue to have anything else done.
Okay.
My hands are tied.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Carla Sharp, I assume you're, you're with your husband?
I'm to relinquish my three minutes to someone else that has a letter.
Okay.
Possibly Rhonda.
Next person on the list is Ryerson, B. Ryerson? Please, for the record, state your name and address.
My name is BJ Ryerson. I live at 586 Carlton Road.
And what is it you'd like the planning board to know?
So I farm the property that Wesley, the farm that Wesley has, and he's speaking about the pond, so I'm quite familiar with what's happening with that subdivision right next to farming property, and I just wish and hope that you will consider this. Your unconditional rezoning of this property that is in question is, in my mind, akin to me going out and getting a CDL license that allows me to haul whatever the maximum amount is. Do you want me, my first day on the job, hauling a maximum load, following you in busy traffic? So if you rezone this without giving yourselves time to realize the mistakes, i.e. exactly what Wesley is going through, and what, what we see, we as people see what happened with these multi-residential, high-density neighborhoods. I don't think this is what the county, the people who live in this county, i.e., you have all these people here, this isn't the kind of living they want. We want that serenity, that's why we moved out here, and for you to just say, unconditionally, you can do whatever you want and beg for mercy later, is just... and beg for mercy later is just not allowing yourself the learning curve. And I think you need the learning curve, let alone you need people on your board that are from our area, from our part of the county, that live around these people. And personally, I used to be a paramedic in Forsyth and Randolph County. And I used to teach in Guilford, Rockingham, Forsyth, Randolph. And so I'm very familiar with the EMS aspect of this, which is, you right now do not have the personnel to provide what's demanded or required by the state as far as a certain level of care. Now, you add in all of these houses and all of the people that go with it. Paramedics are required to be a patient advocate. They're going to want to go to Guilford County. They're going to want to go to Baptist or Forsyth. And when that truck leaves this county, you're already taking a reduced-staffed system. And that truck is gone now. And you just are considering, and you possibly might add, you've already approved a lot of people being added to this area. So that's something that I think is... And you might think it's more people. And so we'd get more staffing. But I promise you, when you have to do those transports to 40 minutes just to get there, or however long it takes to get there and time to get back, you don't know what time you're going to get home in the morning. And that's going to last only so long at the pay rate that paramedics and EMTs get.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Larry Ryerson. Are you...
My name's Larry Ryerson. I live at the same 586 Carlton Road, address that Barbara does.
Yes, sir.
Express the same sentiments that Eddie does about his property. Same thing as Mr. Sharp with the runoff. All the extra properties that you... You know, developments you're planning on doing with the concrete and whatnot. It's not helping the situation. It just makes it worse.
Okay.
I don't understand how we're here to review a rezoning and not review what those plans are for the actual property. I heard you say that was going to be at a later date. And that just doesn't make sense to me. I don't go out and buy a cart before I have a horse. It just doesn't work that way.
Okay, so you're in agreement with what everybody else is saying?
I am.
All right, then we're going to move on to a different speaker.
Thank you.
Is it Tammy? Is it Rice?
Reed.
Reed? Again, I ask that if you've heard what has been said and you're going to say the same thing, please just yield your time to someone who has a different take on things.
I live at 719 Carlton Road. My husband and I have 42 acres there. Jacob Creek runs through part of that acreage. Like Mr. Sharp, our creek gets red mud at half-inch rain. You know, we're dealing with the Collie Brook issue as well. As you know, it's emotional for all of us. You know, we live here. We feel safe here. This is our home. You know, I moved here from Greensboro to get away from the city. And it's coming at us at full speed. And if we can just take a breath and back off and maybe not do townhomes and, you know, maybe have a subdivision that has fewer than six houses on an acre would be nice. I mean, I know we're not going to stop the development. But if we can just make it... Everybody follow the rules and maybe a little less density, it would be helpful for all of us. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. John Knight? Is that right, sir? John Knight?
I signed the wrong place.
Okay. Chris Roddenbaugh? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cheers Rodenbow. And I live at 171 Carefree Lane. I'm the property manager for Camp Carefree. So you'll see me again later for other issues, same neighborhood. I only have one question, and that is for Mr. Cochran. Because when we began the meeting, he said that this parcel we're talking about was an odd section that people assumed was New Bethel Township, but it was Huntsville Township, and it crossed 220 at that point. Did I misunderstand that? Because everything else says it's in New Bethel.
We can double-check.
Yeah, well, you know, that's important because of fire and everything else. That's my only question. And if he has more to add, I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Matthew Johnson.
Rhonda Rodenbaugh?
Hello, I'm Rhonda Rodenbow. And I'm on the executive board for Camp Carefree. And we at Camp Carefree are very concerned about the growth that's taken place in that area. It's going to have a major impact on the traffic, which I know has already been mentioned. But I think we can all look back and see that there's been several fatal accidents since they changed some of the roadway out there in the last few years. We're going to see more and more of that. I know that the DAT may have to do something. But in this situation, we need to be foresighted and think about how these people are going to get from their homes onto 220, to and from both Madison and Greensboro. I know you don't want to be a bedroom town. And we would like to see growth in our area. But it's got to be responsible growth that doesn't jeopardize the people that already live in that area and the things that are already put in place in that area. So we have got to do something to slow this growth down to a rate that's going to be respectful of the citizens of our county and also allow for the amenities and things that we need in our county, such as the water, the fire, the police, and those sorts of things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cindy Young?
Hello.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Cindy Young. And I live at 405 Noonam Road. So this directly affects me on a daily basis because I live on the road that we're proposing to build on to. You know, I built a house out on Noonam Road. I grew up on Noonam Road. I moved to Greensboro for 12 or 13 years. And I built a house back in 2019, back on Noonam Road. I'm very concerned about the traffic situation. We've been told by the DOT that it's going to be eight to 10 years before they do anything about it. But it is a very dangerous intersection right there. There's traffic accidents all the time. The speed less than 100 feet away from the turn-in to Noonam Road, it goes from 65 to 55. Nobody slows down. There's accidents there all the time. And there's just one exit. For everyone using Noonam Road, everyone on Bennett Farm Road, we only have one exit. It's already horrendous to try to get out and make a turn. It's very dangerous. And it's just very hard to turn. And now we've got a new development coming on Noonam Road. There's a new development, what, 1,400 houses approved on Bennett Farm Road. And now we're talking about adding even more. How are the people that live on Noonam Road? How are we supposed to go about our lives when they're telling us eight to 10 years? I mean...
Well, if I can interrupt you...
That's what we've talked to... I mean, that's what the DOT is telling us.
Yeah. If I can interrupt you for just one minute, and I'll allow you more time to make this comment. It's interesting that the NC DOT gave you that information of an eight to 10 years before anything major is going to happen. You know, when we look at these planned developments, these housing developments, the one mistake you can't make is to think that they're going to be up by next year. Some of these build-outs are 12 years to build all the homes in the development. So they're not going to happen overnight either.
With all due respect, sir, it's already a problem on our road. And we're basically the only people using it now is the people on Noonam Road and Bennett Farm Road. And it's just us families on Noonam Road right now. It's all family. And then the people on Bennett Farm Road. And we already are waiting 10 minutes in the morning to go to work to be able to make a turn. I mean, it's already a problem. And they're telling us that it's going to be eight to 10 years. I understand what you're saying. But we're already dealing with this on a daily basis. So I just think it's very important that you hear from people that actually live on this road.
No, you can keep going.
You know, obviously, you know, like I said, I grew up on Noonam Road. I don't want to see everything... I moved from Greensboro to get away from this. I understand that it's coming. But I think that we need to do it in a responsible way. If we're going to grow, we need to have the infrastructure in place to not be able... Not be putting our families' lives at jeopardy on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you. Sherri Webster?
Hi, my name is Sherri Webster. I live at 402 Noonam Road, same road that my sister lives on. My parents couldn't be here, but they own a farm on that same road. I'm sorry, I'm probably going to get emotional. I didn't want to speak, but I could not.
Take your time. I'll allow you extra time if you need it.
First, I'm going to be honest. I'm quite appalled that we would even consider a development, that we have no idea what the stipulations are for the growth that's going to happen there, what type of housing it would be. You know, how many houses? We already know it could possibly be six. This board approved two other developments that we are now being impacted by. One on Bennett Farm with up to 1,500 homes and one by Terry Neal on our road with at least 70-something. They're building... They started building this weekend. They're already cutting down the trees, which to a family that's been there 120 years is horrible. We understand it's going to happen. But you had no plan. There's no way for us to get out of the road, just as my sister said. We went to the meeting that was at Huntsville School that the developers came to from the Bennett Farm development. They were very nice. They answered our questions. They said eight to 10 years. The planning board had... And commissioners had no plan for traffic infrastructure. They admitted that to us. They told us to contact the NC DOT, which has said, "This is not in our direct plan." And I understand what you're saying about this could be years out. But they're starting that development now. And if they finish that in, let's say, two years, that's another eight, possibly, that we are not going to have an out to our road. And we're sharing that right now with eight families, maybe, and then whatever couple on Bennett Farm. We can't get out. I have a 16-year-old, 17-year-old. I have a 93-year-old grandma. They drive and have to sit at that stop sign. A stop sign. And now you're adding 70-some more families. The 1,500 on Bennett Farm, who eventually will have another out over towards 65, we're told, until that gets built, will all share one stop sign. How can you feasibly say that's okay? Would that be okay for your family? I don't see it. I just find it insulting that you would approve a development that we don't have the infrastructure for. And you have no plans for what that development actually is. I've never even heard of a straight zoning like that. I never knew that was a thing. I'm glad I know now. That is totally unfeasible to me, that we would even consider that. How could you not care more about our county than to approve something that you have no idea what it's even going to be?
Thank you. The last speaker signed up is Johnny Brown. Again, for the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Johnny Brown. I live at 402 Noonam Road. There's nothing more I could say other than what the people have said already. It's just the idea. I think that I concur with them is that the planning seems to be lacking. And we need to... We're not saying that you can't, or we're not going to develop in this area. We know that Rockingham County wants to develop. We know about the economic incentive for development. But it has to be done in a responsible way. And I think that's what everyone else is saying. Like, the planning needs to be planned well enough so that it's not chaotic, it's not dangerous. It's done in a way that suits the county and keeps... It also... It will keep the people here that are used to a certain lifestyle and will bring people in that are wanting that lifestyle as well, as opposed to just urban sprawl that you've seen in other places like Guilford County or what have you. And that's it.
This is the number of signed speakers for this case.
Can you hear me? I just wanted to say to Chris, you are correct. That was a typo in the slide. The actual staff report does say New Bethel. The slide said Huntsville. There is a parcel directly north of this Noonam parcel that is in Huntsville. I mean, like, directly north, where odd little points cross over. And there was a typo based on that. But it is in New Bethel in our staff report and in the official record, yeah.
Comments, board members? Is the applicant here for this?
Yes, sir.
We'd like to hear from you, sir.
Okay, no, great.
My name is Bill Arnt. I live at 7291 Henson Forest Drive in Summerfield. We are working on plans for the development. And I'm really happy that I got to hear everybody's comments regarding it. I'm sorry if I'm not addressing you, but these are the folks that are commenting on it. And I think it shed some light on what I really need to present for the planning board. I think density is a fear of yours, obviously, and several others in this room. And I think I need to...
Oh, I'm sorry. At least turn the microphone with you.
Well, I was just talking to people. Talking about... But no, I just want to make sure that I did note everyone... Everybody's comments. I understand the traffic impact that this could cause and the safety of each family that would be living there. And all I can do is address it with a plan and then re-present that to Lynn and his group and get it back to you guys, I guess. I don't know. But I know we do need the rezoning to be able to move that far, if that makes sense.
Well, to me, it does. It may not to everyone here. And I think everyone here needs to know that even if this land is rezoned for the possibility of aid development going in, there's no guarantee or that it's going to be six homes per acre or four homes or three homes. A lot of that depends upon the topography of the land. And even once he develops a site plan, that plan is submitted to a group in the county called the Technical Review Committee. And the Technical Review Committee is... Its membership includes a member of the planning board, which happens to be me. It includes people from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. It includes people from Duke Energy, the school system, the fire marshal, emergency services, Rodney Cates. There's 14 voting members on the TRC and several other members who don't vote but have valuable input as stakeholders to all of these developments. So there's no guarantee that even if Mr. Arnt delivers a site plan to the TRC for approval, that it will get approved.
I'm sorry?
I mean, the thing is, I mean, you're just...
Well, we can't just say... We can't just sit here and say, "Well, the county's going to stop all growth as of today."
Why can't he present a plan before we... Before we... It's the way to do it in Guilford.
Could you explain the difference between straight rezoning and conditional zoning and how that works?
Actually, I don't think we need to go into Q and A.
There's that point, too.
Let's have... I'm going to ask you to do that. Let's have staff discuss what the difference between straight rezoning and conditional rezoning is.
This is not normally how we proceed. This is public comment period. But this is a hot issue tonight, of course. North Carolina law stipulates what is a straight rezoning and what is a conditional rezoning. Any applicant has the choice to submit a straight rezoning versus a conditional rezoning. Once the applicant has made that choice, we cannot, at the planning board level or the commissioners' level, place conditions on the request unless...
Okay, good request.
This is not a question and answer. This is me explaining what it is. The applicant can request conditions. He did not in this case. So we're not going any further with that. Again, this is not a question and answer, folks. This is not a question and answer. We can review it. That's the difference between...
Let's just quiet down here.
A straight and a conditional rezoning. A straight and a conditional rezoning. Some people do submit conditional rezonings. Our next request is for a conditional rezoning, which means it opens it up to more questions, to more examination. But in this case, being a straight rezoning is allowed completely and clearly by North Carolina law. Then, planning staff reviews it to make a recommendation for denial or approval. We look at the land use plan, we look at the use metrics in the area. The land use plan and the use metrics support this request. We don't just make this up. We research this and we use the records and the laws and the guidance that we have. That's where our review comes from. The recommendation from here goes to the Board of Commissioners to make the final decision. If that helps you understand, it's, basically, straight rezoning is a legal type of zoning, nonconditional.
You can strike it down right now, if you want to.
We can't, we can't strike down a law, sir.
You can, you can strike down this rezoning request right now.
If the facts of the case fit the state law, North Carolina General Statute 160D, if the facts of the case comport with the comprehensive land use plan, and if the facts of the case comport with the unified development ordinance, this board does not have a legal right to deny it.
I find it hard to believe. You cannot deny this applicant right now. Just period. Then why would you have a hearing? I mean, why would you have this discussion if you can't deny it? I don't, I don't understand that.
If we want to?
Well, you just said you couldn't. So which is it? Could you or couldn't you?
Excuse me, sir. And chairman?
Yes, sir.
We're not really conducting our business in the way we should be, in my opinion, I'm sorry, but, you know, shouting back and forth isn't conducive to, to the hearing. So if you'd like to reopen the public hearing, you're welcome to, and let the gentleman speak. But again, I advise, this is not question and answer. This is just to receive public comment and for y'all to deliberate on a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Excuse me. The other thing you want to remember here is that whatever this planning board does, it only serves as a recommendation to the county commissioners. They have the final say. All right, board members, any discussion?
I personally believe the citizens have legitimate concerns. I see their concerns, I understand them. There has been a lot of lost farmland and open land with these developments, and they should have input as far as what goes on, because they do live there. It doesn't impact me where I live yet, but it could later. And I understand their, excuse me, their concerns, but I think probably the citizens and the fire department's concerned, and some of the other entities probably should have more discourse and more, more input and more discussion about what's going to go in this area, because this is only going to get worse, and this is going to happen again, and there's, you know, there's always going to be this concern there. I'd just like, you know, to make that known. That's, that's my feeling on it. I think probably something should be organized and more input from these citizens that live over there, because they, they live there and they have to deal with this. And there needs to be a way for them to get their voices heard and their interests expressed. That's my feeling on it, so.
Yes, Cindy.
I, I agree with what you're saying and maybe have a meeting with the developer. It's hard, and I don't think the chairman meant that we could not vote to deny, because we can go one way or the other. But I know that there's a lot of growth coming this way. But, but without any input or to not hear what, especially not just adjoining landowners, but families that have been here for years. I too moved here from Greensboro, and we had, we had cases, I was on zoning there. We had cases and everyone would say, "I don't want this in my backyard, not in my backyard, not in my backyard." But here it's different, because people's backyards are acres and acres and acres. So they've got family farms and memories and roots here, and I understand completely what you're saying. I think maybe if there had been a meeting between the developer and the neighborhood, that might have helped, but, but I do have concerns with it being a straight rezoning.
No, go ahead. Okay. Well, my, my main issues are, well, let me do it the first way. By right, it's his property. I'm usually one of those folks who are on the side of, you do what you want with your property. However, have traveled that area often. I agree with most of you when you talk about that intersection being dangerous as far as the traffic goes, and I think that needs to be addressed a little more in depth for this particular case also. Matt mentioned EMS and fire, and then several folks mentioned the protection from our uniformed officers for that area as well. I think those are all valid points as well. Unfortunately, I don't think that we can slow down growth in this area, being that it's a corridor and it's been something that has been discussed amongst the county in that area for a number of years. So for us to think that growth's not going to happen, as most of you all alluded to, you know it's coming, it's just how it comes is what we need to probably control, and I think most of you would agree with that part. And there's also the concern if we're putting this many houses out there, and I've always been told that for every one and a half, or for every house, you're going to produce, well, maybe produce is the wrong word, you're going to have one and a half kids, you know, per household. Didn't mean to suggest that we're going to produce that many kids out of that area, but... So that brings to light, you know, what are we going to do with schooling that area, which I know that the county school system and the commissioners are addressing now. And some might argue not very effectively, but that's a whole different ballpark as well. But again, with that being said, I think that some more discussion needs to be had amongst, not only with staff, but with the applicant, and possibly more with DOT and some other entities as well. So, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion that we table this discussion for at least 30 days.
Before we, your motion is seconded, I just want to go on the record as saying that I've got a really bad problem with the exiting of Newman Road onto 220 or Bennett Farm Road. It looks like... When they come out, it's Bennett Farm, that's the one that Coley Brook is on?
That map, it, it kind of smooshes together Bennett Farm Road and 220.
It's right next to it.
Right next to it.
Yeah.
But Newnham does exit directly.
Because it looks like when you come out of Newman Road, you actually have to go north and cross over to be able to come back south. Ma'am, please, please, please.
You have to do a complete circle, it is very dangerous.
I experienced that the other day.
I have a question for Mr. Arndt. Yes, hold on, Mr.?
Do I not get to speak? What was your name, ma'am?
Name?
Check both sheets, just in case.
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking. You signed up for the wrong case.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll give you a chance. Sure.
My name is Ann Tuttle, I'm an old woman, resident of the county since 1952, and have more yesterdays than tomorrows, as most people in this room do.
What's your street address?
I have been a nurse, an emergency room nurse, for many years. I just retired in January. The county policy is that anything that's hurt or in this county goes to a county hospital. I retired from Annie Penn, where the wait was seven to 10 hours to get seen in an emergency room. Five days out of seven, and during the COVID epidemic, much worse than that. For 20 years, I was at Wesley Long. I was a charge nurse at Wesley Long. People in western Rockingham County, I could get to western, I could get to Wesley Long in 17 minutes from western Rockingham County. And it was when it was two-lane, and I sped. Now, it's a four-lane road. You can get to a trauma center, a heart center, to Baptist in 24 minutes. You can get to Cone or Wesley Long in 15 minutes, because it's four-lane, with an ambulance. Traumas are supposed to go out of county. They rarely do, because everybody says it's county policy. And you've got people that are paramedics, that are not many paramedics in this county, and the county's losing them hand over fist, because hospitals are so depleted now of nurses, that are so burned down and have left the profession, that they're hiring EMTs in their emergency rooms now. So they don't even recognize a trauma. I can tell you five people that came to county hospitals from western Rockingham County that should have gone to a trauma center, and two of them died, because they lost their golden hour. We don't have the capability for care in this county for what you're putting in houses. That's the first thing I want to tell you. The second one is, for four years, I was a travel nurse. I went to the southwest. I saw Lake Mead, and I saw Hoover Dam, and it was about 50% down then. It's 30% capacity now. They're finding bodies in barrels that have been theirs for 50 years, because now, and they're uncovering all kinds of Indian relics. And it's because they've misused what they have. They can't even give the Colorado River water to farms like Del Monte and all those other great big industrial farms down there, because there's not enough water, much less give it to Mexico. And then there are the fires. Tens of thousands of acres in New Mexico, and in New Mexico and Arizona are on fire because there's no water, there's no water. What we didn't learn in school, nobody made it easy for us, is that trees breathe in what we exhale. We breathe in oxygen, we exhale carbon dioxide. Trees, corn, bushes, grass breathe in carbon dioxide and gives us back oxygen. They're the lungs of the earth. I learned that from the Native Americans. Water is like the blood in our bodies. It is the veins and the heartbeat of the earth, and you are just decimating, just, I don't, I can't say it anymore, because now I'm old, but think of it, think of it. What are you leaving your children and your grandchildren? There are no farms. We talk about inflation and how there's a back, you go to the grocery store and you can't find what you want? You can't find what you want, because there's no water to water the fields, because it's been managed by people in the southwest, because it was more important to have money than it was for anything else. What are you leaving your children and your grandchildren? I urge you to leave this agricultural, because we're going to need the agriculture, because we don't have it in the southwest anymore, in the industrial farms. Thank you for letting me speak. And thank you, ma'am, thank you very much.
Returning to my concern about, returning to my concern about Newman Road. Well, like I said, I've got a problem with that.
Technically, that's the only way for them to get out of that, where the area where the road goes up through that property, it's, you have to come out Newman.
I can see that.
I bit myself, it's, it's very difficult to get out of there. Very...
No, sir. All right, James has made a motion to... Would you motion to continue this?
I got, I think, one more question, but yes, it was. But, Mr. Arndt, the northern part of the proposed property, right across the four lanes there is Simpson, is, and I'm trying to remember what it looks like right there, maybe you or somebody else can help out. Would there be a possibility to get another egress on the north part of that property?
Yes, there is, actually. We prematurely ran that by DOT, and we are going to be able to put in a D cell lane and potentially have two access points, which will make it a little bit better with regard to the access part of it.
So before we come back, Mr. Chair, for, in 30 days, if we pass the motion to table, would, can we get with DOT and see if we can work on that and maybe make that part of your...
Absolutely, yeah, yes. I have a sketch plan right now, but judging by what, you know, these folks that live in the community have heard, I want to be able to respond to that properly. And I would actually, because I, there are people that are already living on Lowryder Drive, which I did have a community meeting with them, just to let them know what was going on. And if the folks on Newnham would want to sit down with me and just say, "Hey, look at what I would like to do," and shoot holes in it, I don't have a problem with that. I want to be a part of the Rockingham County community, and I'm not going to, just going to ignore what they're asking, because it makes sense. And if we have two points of access on this piece of property, one to the north and one to the south to Newnham, then that's just something that I have to figure out from an engineering perspective, so.
Resubmit.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it sounds like, you know, from what I'm hearing, we need to table this for right now, and that's fine. I mean, I would like to get the at least approval to move myself into an engineering stage, because obviously there is something involved in that financially on my end, but it's however I feel like you guys think is necessary. Because like you mentioned earlier, Commissioner, even though I have a plan and you guys approve this rezoning, my plan might not be approved, and I'm going back down the road, or figuring something else out. That's the way I see it, so. But I do, I would love to get the Newnham Road folks involved.
So with, with, if we pass the motion to table for 30 days, would that give you ample time to meet with those folks and then res, possibly resubmit?
I believe so, yeah.
My motion, Mr. Chair?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to table this application for 30 days. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition, so this case will be continued until the June meeting.
11th. June 11th.
11th, June 11th. Ask staff to present case number 2022-10. Okay, this is 2008. This one will go a little faster as...
Chance to filter out, so we don't get background noise. Noise is dying down a little bit. So, our next case, since number nine was temporarily withdrawn, is case 2022-10. This is a request for a rezoning from residential agricultural and residential mixed to residential protected conditional district. This is specifically for a cluster subdivision. One thing I'd like to go ahead and point out here is, cluster subdivision, according to our ordinance, is not defined, nor are there any guidelines for such within the zoning ordinance. A cluster subdivision in this case is set up and guided by the watershed ordinance, and I'll explain that as we move along. It has to do with these three taxpens, one of which is significantly larger, two that are smaller, that I'll point out on the map. Located off of Bavarian Lane and Lakeview Drive, this one's definitely New Bethel Township. This is a conditional rezoning. Here's the location. It's actually not... It's actually not located smack in the middle of the corridors that we've been looking at lately. It's a bit to the east. It's in a really unique spot, actually, as far as the land use plan goes, and I'll explain that too. The zoning districts in the area are very heavily residential, residential mixed, residential protected. There's a little bit of neighborhood commercial. Just south of this parcel is the Bethany School parcel, and just south of that, across 158, is the Glencoe Church Loop, $158 general. This is in the Troublesome Creek watershed 3 area, and NSW here is just basically an abbreviation for balance of watershed. It's not in a critical area. Being in a, being in a balance of watershed for Troublesome Creek without a, an approved cluster development, and approved being here a possibility, not already a done deal, an approved cluster development, minimum lot sizes are 40,000 square feet, which would have made development of this prob, prob, this parcel limited. But with a cluster subdivision, lots can be smaller with guidelines that allow for significant preservation of open space, thus sort of meeting two goals at once. You're going to have a clustered area of higher density, but you're going to have a lot of preserved open space. And I'll point those points out. Here's the land use plan. You've got a little tail of it right on the bubble of G2. And as we know, G3 and G2, those bubbles are a little bit arbitrary. You have a G1 growth area a bit to the east. A chunk of this is in the O2 land class. And it might be counterintuitive, do you think about it? Cluster subdivision in O2, but actually it more conforms with the goals of O2 than it does something like G2 or G3, these others that we looked at, because the primary focus of a cluster subdivision is to preserve as much open land as possible. So I selected some, there's more information, of course, in the staff report, but just some simple quotes from the land use plan. The G2 policy, G22 encourages a range of housing, including single-family developments that need, meet the needs of all ages and income levels. And then the balance of the O2 rural land class provides primarily for low-density, single-family residential uses. Here's where I point, want to point out a difference. Though this is a cluster subdivision, when you look at the density, it's less than one housing, excuse me, one dwelling unit per acre, essentially is what it comes down to. It's less than our most minimum threshold now for density by essentially half an acre or more. So they're dropping well below what their possible density could be if it weren't in a watershed. So here, it's, it's a lot of information, but this is in your, in your packet in the staff report. There's a definition of cluster subdivision that's provided in the definition section of the ordinance. The rest of those points there are the points in your staff report for this case on page two of the staff report, cluster subdivision definitions and conditions, A through E. And I also put in the general guidelines of the watershed 3 balance of watershed rules from our watershed ordinance. And the language that we're using is from 2A that development is limited to one dwelling unit per 40,000 square feet on a project, per project basis, except within an approved cluster development. Cluster development, again, is defined by the watershed ordinance, not the zoning ordinance. These rules up here are from the watershed ordinance, which is what defines the cluster development.
So what's, if I may, Lynn, how many single-family residents in a cluster?
The total in the proposed site plan, and this site plan is open for review and discussion, is 45 residential units, residential lots. And this map is hard to see because it's actually a large-scale map that we've sort of compressed just to give you a snapshot. The reason it's laid out this way is to make sure that the roadways are at specific plateaus and elevation, and that lots themselves occupy what is the highest area of elevation along the parcel, which is one of the requirements of the rules, that the, all residential structures be built in uplands away from lowlands and bodies of water, and that these areas' land be dedicated, and it has to be dedicated to the homeowners association after development is maintained by the developer so that these areas remain open in perpetuity, that they are part of the cluster subdivision and it stays that way. That does not change.
Okay.
In the future. But again, number is about 45. It leads to what, in the view of many county folks or county lots, when you're talking about large multi-acre tracts, might seem like smaller tracts, but when you consider the advantage of the cluster subdivision in preserving water quality, in preserving these open spaces and open land within the land use class, it actually makes a lot of sense. The, I had a discussion with the applicant who, well, excuse me, the surveyor for the applicant, who was Bill Greco with Land Solutions. I have not discussed anything with the owner. This was the sort of recommended path forward that we came up with. There are some notes on the site plan that you might have been able to see a little bit better. Average lot size is essentially going to be slightly under half an acre for each lot within a cluster subdivision. So they're not tiny lots.
No.
They're not expansive lots. The others have to do with stream buffers and easements will be shown, delineated. The existing portion of Bavarian Lane that is gravelled is going to be paved, and the road's going to be brought up to NC DOT standard, along with this new proposed road and this small stub road with the cul-de-sac. Those will be all NC DOT standard subdivision roads, as are, is required by the ordinance and reviewed by TRC. And here, there's a note that open space will be utilized and conveyed to homeowners association upon recordation of final plat. And the information about density is in the small table to the bottom right-hand corner. It's a little hard to see unless it's on a large format map. This area isn't a zone X. It is not in a flood plain of any kind. So on, on balance, staff has reviewed it. Given the cluster development, we are recommending approval. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any more questions because this is kind of a new thing, the cluster option, that was built into the new ordinance. It was built in because the watershed ordinance was updated to match what at the time was the North Carolina state model for the watershed ordinance. There are probably going to be some updates made to the model ordinance soon, but those will be a while out before they might actually make their way into our ordinance. But as it stands, these are the recommendations of the watershed ordinance for what cluster development should be in a cluster subdivision.
Are there any questions for Lynn? Is the applicant here?
I don't know if Bill came. Bill, hey, I'm glad you're here. Come on.
If you'd please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Bill Greco. I'm with Land Solutions. My address is PO Box 347 in Oak Ridge, North Carolina. Here this evening, speaking on behalf of the applicant, on behalf of this project. Excuse me, I'd like to start off, first of all, thanks to staff, all the staff in the Development Department. They were very helpful in getting the application together, obviously get the packets to you folks, and thanks to the board for hearing this this evening. I don't want to retread old ground. Staff's done a great job with their staff report. All of the technical issues, I think, are in there, but just in a general, higher-level sense, I think this boils down to just a few topics. The property's currently zoned RA and RM. I would personally consider this somewhat of a downzoning. We're removing the RM possibilities for mixed. RA, a cluster by definition in Section 4 of your UDO, cluster is allowed and permitted in RA by right. So density is generally always a hot topic of conversation with any development. We are certainly not asking to increase what's already allowable on that property. We're actually achieving less than mathematically what we could ask for, certainly more with this conditional use zoning. The sketch plan, and with cluster development in general, this is something I do frequently from a subdivision design standpoint. I've done literally hundreds. I did the one the previous applicant lives in. When he stated his address, it, it kind of clicked off for me. Hey, I did that one. So cluster is not new. It may be something that is not in front of you all the time, but in a general sense here, we are taking Bavarian Lane, which is currently a NC DOT gravel road. We're going to improve that by paving it up to NC DOT standard. That's at no cost to the county or to any of the neighbors or anything else. We will improve Bavarian Lane. Our street network, of course, we've included two stub streets, which speaks to connectivity, which is always an underlying goal of the ordinance and the UDO, is interconnectivity with other parcels. So we do have two stubs provided there. And our lot size and our plans in general, you know, we believe this preservation of open space, this, this gives the surrounding community, the visual impact to them and buffering is somewhat built in automatically by the open space. So all the green that you see and the blue on the plan will be open space. Again, this is a conditional zoning. The UDO dictates that a concept site plan be submitted, reviewed, and part of the application. Staff has certainly reviewed the plan. It does meet your criteria. It is conditional, so I'm happy to discuss if we need to or elaborate or review any of the conditions, and certainly here to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, doesn't he require a, doesn't he require a fire department turnaround here and here?
There should be a provision for that. I think this is a streetcar end up here.
This is the property line. Well, I was looking at the. Oh, Wolf, was Wolf's around?
Yeah.
If I may, real quick.
But I think that's, I don't know if that's a turnaround there or not.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, what this plan doesn't really accurately show is along the property line going north is another road.
Yeah, that's why we were discussing.
Okay, I was just, for, since y'all were discussing, and that wasn't going towards the YouTube channel. But just for everyone's knowledge, that, that stub road would actually come out, back out to a gravel road that comes back around down the property.
Right, it's Wolf'sburg Trail.
Wolf'sburg Trail.
So I don't know, without having consulted the fire marshal, I don't know whether that would require any type, since this connects to another existing road, whether any kind of like stub would need to be done there.
Yeah. The other, the other thing that, let's see, it's, is it Bavarian Lane that dead ends? Doesn't that have to have a emergency vehicle turnaround, 96 feet?
Turnaround will be built in as part of the development stage and then removed when the cul-de-sac and the full road development is in place, according to normal rules. I hope I'm getting picked up on the microphone here. Let me glance at mine.
Said anything to you about a turnaround at the end of Bavarian Lane?
We do show one on the plan. I apologize, I didn't bring a full-size one, but we do have a, an NC DOT standard temporary turnaround. Right there. But does that, does that intrude into a lot or a? Is, is slightly larger to accommodate. To accommodate, okay. Yes, sir. That's what we were discussing.
At, at the same time, reasoning as standard with DOT, when we talk about these things, should there ever be development on the other side that allows that connectivity, that stub would be probably abandoned. But at the same time, we want to allow a driveway to that property to come off that stub. It'll have to be separated.
Right.
So there'd be no driveway from the, from the road network.
Okay.
Or from the turnaround network. It'd be from the actual road network.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. We'll, here's some other speakers, and then we'll invite you back up to, for rebuttal if you wish. All right. We have Christine Patterson, Clint Patterson, and is it Edna Patterson? Between the three of you, do you have one person that can speak? Okay. That'll, that'll save us some time. If you would, for the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Christine Patterson. Address is 840 Hudson Road in Summerfield, where our property actually backs up to this piece of property that y'all are considering rezoning. We have several issues, one with the plans that were submitted along with the rezoning. There are several natural streams that run through those properties that come into ours. So any development that's done in that area is going to cause issues to our property with the backflow. We have lived there for over 20-plus years. So I know the, the developer does not currently live in that area, is not aware of the issues that we have, such as when it does rain, and there's no way that that property can support 45 homes. Contrary to what everybody says, the way that that, that, the top, the way it's all laid out, there's just no way. We would ask that somebody from the county come out and actually survey and take a look at this piece of property. We ourselves bought first eight acres out there, and we were told in that eight acres that it could barely support a three-bedroom home. So to have that back up right to another piece of property, it's, it's, y'all are trying to put 45 homes, it's just unreal. We also have an issue with that be rezoning to put 45 homes in when we are all under, we have volunteer fire departments. We don't even have full staff. That's a volunteer fire department that answered that. We have ourselves had to try call 911, and it'd take 20 to 30 minutes to get service out there just because of that rural area. So to try to develop it and put that, that type of cluster home in there would not be With the New Bethany School, we've had an increase of accidents just on those two roads right there at Highway 158 and Hudson Road, which I'm, I have been told, it may not be guaranteed, but I've been told that that might be considered another option for trying to come and go from that property. Just the layout itself, the landowner has yet to even help us bring those roads up to DOT standard. For him to now all of a sudden want to do that just so that he can develop this property is just unreal for us. We do live within, probably, there's four developments within that whole area. So they're sitting with vacant lots. I, I don't see the need for us trying to go in and put in another subdivision that's gonna just sit with, with vacant lots for so long, trying to have contractors coming going from this area when Rockingham County hasn't even filled up those prior subdivisions. And we are actually just down the street from the prior case that y'all heard, which is the Colley Brook. In addition to, with all the development that's been in that area, we're already seeing issues with the wildlife. No one's taking into consideration that when you're tearing down all these trees and redeveloping that land, that wildlife's got to go somewhere. So we're having more animals being hit on that roadway. We're having, I mean, you're, if you have deer cams out there, you see that the deer are not the same quality as what we had 10 and 15 years ago. I also have an issue with the way that y'all sent out this notice. This notice has the wrong parcel number referenced on it. There was one sign put out about this rezoning order, and it's stuck right in front of the property. Nothing was sent out correctly or advertised correctly to let all the neighbors in that area know what was being done. So I, I just, I think that y'all failed on that part by not sending us the correct information. I do see that it is corrected on the screen, but that's not what we got. So I, there's just several issues that we have and all around with this whole land development. And, yeah. Last property is listed incorrect parcel. Last property is listed incorrect parcel. No, but, I mean, y'all are representing the, the board that is for that department, so we have an issue with that.
Well, if a typo happened, I apologize.
Um, and just lastly, when this property was originally purchased by the developer, uh, or the person that's trying to develop the property, it was purchased under different conditions. And I realize people change and can do what they want with their land, but, um, as it was explained to us, this was never going to be developed to this extent, and that if homes were putting, were put on that property, it was going to go within our family guidelines of kind of how that community is, which is small homes, we were talking maybe seven to 10. Um, if you put that on there, that's one thing, but 45 homes in that type of area is just not realistic. Uh, more roads would have to be updated, and we would have to have more services from the county, such as, uh, an actual staffed 24/7 fire department, police, EMS personnel, not volunteers. So, there's, there's just no way to support this type of development in this area.
Thank you very much. B J Ryerson? I believe he signed the wrong case, didn't he?
Yeah, B J spoke earlier.
All right, we'll take him out.
Yeah.
And, and Tuttle, she's... Hold on one second, sir. And, uh, yes, sir.
We had nine minutes, and you only gave her a three or six. Right? Me, my daughter.
I, I asked if one of you would like to speak for...
Yeah, she spoke for six minutes.
Okay.
Sorry, I just got a question.
What's your question?
Uh, what, what are they going to do with the septic system there? Since, I mean, we need somebody out there to look at that little creek that comes on our property.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna speak, sir, please come up and give us your name and address.
Clint Patterson, 840 Hudson Road.
Okay, and you, all right, you're talking about septic? Go ahead.
Yeah, the septic, the septic fields or what are they gonna do with the waste? There's a, there's a creek that runs that's not on none of this, no, no pictures. I'd like somebody to come out there, and I'll take them and show them this creek that comes, we had to put a culvert in. It's not on anything here, and it comes from that area. And I don't know if it's overflow from the ponds, I don't know what it's from, but it comes from that area. Now, where are they gonna put all this waste at? Would you want it in your backyard? Would you want it going into the pond? We, there, I mean, there's nothing, nobody's telling us nothing.
Well, we'll get the, we'll get this gentleman that presented the, or represents the applicant, we'll get him to address that on rebuttal.
Well, suppose we came out there and looked at it, but nobody's put it on the plan. This little, this little creek runs right there, and it runs straight down to Troubleson Creek. It feeds it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, James.
Can we, where is your property located in relation to his on this map?
On the Wolfsburg Trail. If you go all the way to the end of Wolfsburg Trail, that's my property.
Okay.
Very in-laws.
Yeah.
And I see, you'll see the home on it, and then we bought property off Hudson Road because of how bad that is down there. It floods. So, I bought property off Hudson Road and come in off that way now because it floods down there. And then all this wastewater and stuff's gonna be coming down on us and then going right into Troubleson Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we will get, get, we will get the applicant for you to address the, uh, septic, uh, waste on rebuttal. Uh, Bill Greco? Oh, you, you already spoke, okay.
Small creek, flow on there.
Hope Knight?
She had one too.
Keith Knight?
Can I give my time to this gentleman? Cause he got here a little bit late with his time, and he actually has land that he touches to develop.
Okay, what about Jason Knight?
Yeah, I'll...
Okay, and, uh, John Knight also? Yes, sir, please, for the record, state your name and address.
My name's John Knight, and I live at 335 Knight Road. And first of all, I want to say I know Don Mills, friend of mine, and I hope we'll be friends after this. But, uh, my concern is, uh, we're talking about 45 homes, uh, back here on that property. And, uh, we've got 25 families already using Knight Road. It's one way in, one way out. And I feel like it, uh, you know, 45 more, at a car and a half per house, you know, that's, that's gonna be too much. And, uh, that's, that's my concern. We got, we got 25 families, and we got two businesses. We got Knight Farm Supply at the end of the road, and then we got Knight's Container Service about halfway up. So, you know, we got about all the traffic we can handle. So, I wish, I wish you folks would take it into consideration when, when you decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, did you have another designate?
Sorry.
Uh, Knight family? Did you, did he just speak for all of you?
No.
Oh, you want to relinquish the decision? He didn't sign up, so, uh...
He got here late.
You can put it on the back if there's no more lines, Lynn. Mr. Bird? For the record, I know you just wrote it down, but you have to say it as well.
My name is Barry Bird. I live at 201 Knight Road. Our property backs up to this, just looking at being rezoned. Um, I too know Don. Uh, Don's a great builder. Uh, not necessarily opposed to having these houses, but I'm not thrilled about it. Um, like, um, that was said, you know, uh, J C Barham originally owned this property, and when it was sold, uh, you know, there again, Don owns the land, he can do with it what he wants, but it was common knowledge that this type of development would not be put on that land. Um, our biggest issue, uh, and we fought the school because traffic is an issue, a major issue. Um, for marketing values, uh, purposes in this area, it's actually 2.3 cars per household. So, you put 45 cars, about 45 houses back there, and you're pushing 100 cars. Knight Road cannot handle that. It's not lined, it's not wide enough. During peak traffic times from Knight Road to 158, you're lucky if you can get out in 15 minutes. It is ridiculous. Uh, the school zone backs the traffic down to 45, there's nothing to break the traffic. You cannot get in or out of Knight Road during peak traffic times, and now you're gonna put 100 more cars in there? We don't have the infrastructure to support it. We got two deputies on this end of the county. Uh, we've had a lot of theft. The last time I had to call the sheriff's department, it took 45 minutes to get a deputy to us, and we had people on the property that didn't belong, and it took them 45 minutes. Uh, Page cannot get the budget he needs to hire new people. This is ridiculous. We don't have the infrastructure, and, and that's not being addressed. This is a bad use of this land. Uh, like I said, I thank the world of Don, but I live there. He doesn't. You guys don't. Just like's been said before, you need to listen to the property owners. We're not happy about this at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's my sign and chief. Uh, Mr. Greco?
Sir.
I think it's time for your rebuttal.
Yes, sir.
A, a couple of concerns that the people seem to have is traffic, the road width, and what about the septic systems?
Yes, sir. I'm prepared to, um, address the comments that have been made. The Pattersons, uh, had several valid comments slash questions. The streams on the property have been identified on our conceptual site plan, and they have been properly buffered in accordance with the watershed rules and Jordan Lake buffer rules and so forth and so on, as has the pond on our property. Um, as to septic and soil, unlike a, the previous case where it's just a straight rezoning, uh, we've already engaged a licensed North Carolina soil scientist who, who I've worked with for 20-plus years to create a detailed soils map of the property. That's an underlay that I have where I choose where homes are situated and how many. So, I'm, have a very high level of confidence based on the amount of studies that we've completed and the mapping that we have done, that the soils will support three-bedroom septic systems. Um, and, and more for the, um, more for the public's comments than for the board's knowledge. This is the first step of, I'm, I'm just gonna pick a number, this is the first step of about 120 before you get to building a home. So, if there is a problem with the soil, we'll certainly be aware of that when Rockingham County Environmental Health turns us down, which, again, I, I already know what's out there. A couple of other things as to traffic. Traffic's always tricky to discuss, and I'm gonna do my best to, to speak in plain English and, and hopefully not offend anybody. The roads leading to this property are N C D O T state-maintained roads. The gravel piece is not. Traffic is, like many things in those 120 steps, something that when we get to the appropriate point, we will have to apply for an N C D O T commercial driveway permit. And at that time, N C D O T is just like the right hand of the Lord. They can say add a turn lane, add a stop light, widen the road, build a bridge, build, make it wider, that, they have that purview. And it's all based on the state of North Carolina's capacity numbers. A 20-foot ride, state-maintained road has the capacity for tens of thousands of cars. 25 people, if they make 10 times the normal trips than the book standard is, 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 we're not even in the same league when it comes to capacity. We're all human. We all understand if you live on a cul-de-sac or if you live on a street with 25 people, any addition to that is an increase in traffic to you as an individual or to your family, but it is not an impact that is mitigated or otherwise impacted by D O T standards. So, we are 110% within the standards. And again, we're at step one here. Uh, i- if there is a bona fide, D O T identifies traffic problems. They know where they have issues, they know where they want to spend money, where they want to go. So, the minute we turn this in, if they say that area has a problem, we'll know about it, uh, and we'll be certainly informed of it. The other infrastructure questions, I think, um, it, it's helpful for me to always circle back to, you know, why are we here this evening? Uh, it's a public hearing, obviously, for a conditional use zoning with a concept sketch plan. Uh, although we should take note, and I certainly encourage the board to continue, as I've seen this board operate for the past 20-some years I've been doing this, uh, when we have staffing issues with EMS, fire, hospitals, sheriffs, uh, that's not in our purview. It's certainly something that we all, as, as citizens, as human beings living here in North Carolina, should be concerned about and aware about. There's nothing we can do as landowners and applicants to make the sheriff have better response times. Uh, we certainly can't pick, uh, individual cases to sort of lay all the burdens of, of Rockingham County infrastructure on. Um, as to, uh, conditions at the time of sale, from my memory, this sale was completed in 2006. Uh, we have, uh, completed title search on this property. I can assure you, there are no, uh, conditions, covenants, or restrictions that were on it at the time of sale that spoke to development. Uh, conversations may have been had between any number of parties about any number of things, but if I had a dollar for every time my realtor said was, was the, the lead into a conversation or somebody told me, I, you know, I wouldn't be here. But again, uh, I, I hope I've, I've done a fair job in addressing the public's comments, and would certainly just reemphasize with this one, uh, the conditional nature of it. And again, the fact that when it comes to traffic, when it comes to septic, when it comes to streams, when it comes to stormwater runoff, all of those topics are addressed via plans, via permitting, via inspections, via bonds, as we get deeper into the process. And again, I thank you for your time and for the hearing this evening, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Greco? No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As controller of the road, I don't think there's anything that he can do.
Sir, I can just say one thing. He talks about state, he follows the road from the gravel.
Ma'am, if you want to speak, you're gonna have to come up to the podium and be recognized.
I'm sorry, sir.
I just want it noted that he said that, yes, the state road is paved, but from Knight Road where it starts on Bavarian is not paved. That is all gravel lot, all the way down until it turns to Lakeview. That is all gravel lot. When it cuts back to Wolfsburg Trail, again, that's gravel road. And this individual has owned this property, as he even said, since 2006. He has not sunk a single dime to help any of us keep that, keep that road maintained just for us to travel. So, how are we supposed to have faith that he's gonna do it properly to maintain until the state takes it over? I know the process of how the state goes through and uptake, cause we did at one time look at doing that, about having the state take those roads over. There is tons of work that needs to be done. In addition to, there's bad corners where the, the road is so soggy, you can't travel it at certain times. I used to have to park my vehicle almost a mile away from my home and ask my husband to come pick me up on a four-wheeler because those roads cannot maintain. You can't drive vehicles in and out of there. Not like, and you're expecting them to build, have builders come through those roads? Um, trying to, to update them? It's, it's, you're gonna create more of a mess, and more land is gonna be destroyed. Waterways, natural waterways are gonna be destroyed trying to accomplish what they're, they're looking to accomplish. Uh, in addition to, there are natural creeks that are not showing on this map. Contrary to what this gentleman says, we're more than happy to walk the property with him to show him those, those creeks that run up under some of the road that is right there right now. Talking about Bavarian and Lakeview. There are some natural, we had to put culvert pipes in there, so...
I think we get the picture. Thank you.
Mm-huh.
Yes, James.
That's, uh, I believe if I'm reading it right, it's on the site plan under K4 that the roads would be paved to the N C D O T standards.
If I may on that one, uh, regardless with any subdivision where roads are a consideration, they have to be installed prior to any final plat being recorded. So, roads would, if, as a condition of this subdivision, regardless, a, a road would be installed to N C D O T standards because that would be the requirement of the subdivision. Of this large of a subdivision, our ordinances would require a N C D O T qualified road. So, that would have to go in before we'd even approve a final plat.
Oh, is that a problem? Any, uh, other discussion?
I, I'd just like to point out that he is trying to use the...
that he is trying to use the most usable parts of the parcel in the center and then leaving the buffer. I mean, he is, he's trying to, he's trying to maximize, um, the space that he has, just like, uh, as explained earlier in the cluster. Uh, if you look down to the southwest, well, southeast corner of, uh, one of the other maps, you'll see there's a good bit of development down in there. Everything's on an acre lot or better. Um, this is taking that 48 acres and putting 45 houses in the best possible spots on that parcel. Uh, which is a, which is, you know, it's, it's a better idea, especially when you got water involved. Uh, I'd just like to point that out. I think it's a pretty well-drawn plan. Uh, and seems to make, you know, pretty good sense. With the loud, um, cluster development that the UDO allows, I think it, I think it's probably, uh, a very sound plan in my, in my view.
Yeah, these lots will still average, uh, either just under or just over half an acre.
Yeah.
Even though that it is a cluster, it is still way, way beyond what could be put there.
I mean...
I think with our new density requirement, you'd almost get away with quarter-acre lots.
Um, yeah, and, and as Lynn pointed out earlier, uh, since the watershed would require acre lots, or 40,000 square foot lots,
Yeah.
the rule also stipulates that no more, in the cluster, no more lots could be generated than could have been in the original parcel. Parcel being 49 acres, taking out a few for the roads and everything. 45 is still less than he could if they developed the parcel as is. Um, so it's still, as a density component, is less than it would be permissible.
And leaves a lot of green space. Okay. Any other, uh, discussion?
Yeah, I, so I had an opportunity to drive through this whole thing, and went off the road a couple times just to see what was out there. So when you're, so the point here is that the road that, that, that's gonna be in the subdivision is not Lakes View Road or Wolfsburg Trail. Those are, those are gravel. Uh, and when you're on Wolfsburg Trail, the, the point is, is that the, the road toward the property is about six, eight feet higher than the road itself. And so there is a significant, uh, the elevation of the prop, of this parcel is higher, uh, than the parcel to the north of it. So I can see where there's concern about water going in that direction. But it, to me, it seems like they've done what they needed to do in order to address that in the protection of the, uh, of the slopes and the water flow that's in that property, based on what I could see when I visited the site.
If there's no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion. And, uh, if it hasn't point, been pointed out, there's a new, uh, format for making motions.
Let that end real quick. We are trying something new with the consistency and reasonable statement being as a separate document that's referenced through the motion, and it brought into the minutes through that motion, so you don't have to sit there and read the whole thing for several minutes. But those are just draft recommendations for motions. You can still make whatever motion you'd like. We would just ask that you reference that other document, the reasonableness and consistency statement, um, so that it can be pulled into the record.
Oh, do a motion for approval. The Rockingham County Planning Board has reviewed case 20, 2210, rezoning to residential protected conditional district as required by NCGS 160D. Make the following findings. The proposed actions consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and this zoning amendment is supported by the intended descriptions of the G2 and O2 land classes. The permitted use in the residential protected conditional district are compatible with the character of the existing developments on the adjacent parcels in the neighborhood, and the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and policies of Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, G2 and O2 land use, and future land use map. The proposed action is found to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential protected conditional district. The proposed use allows, allowed in the district are appropriate for the land considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and community. The subject property abuts others that are currently zoned residential agricultural, residential, and residential mixed. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential agriculture and institutional uses. The residential protected conditional district rezoning is not discordant with the zoning characteristics of the area. So I move the motion to recommend approval of rezoning request to rezone the specified parcels on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on con, consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the planning board agenda, submitted during the rezoning presentation and as, and may be amended incorporated into motion, into the motion to be included in the minutes as well as any and all agreed-upon conditions also incorporated upon the motion.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to recommend to the commissioners that we, uh, this zoning application be approved. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? The motion carries four to one. Next on our agenda is new business. Our community development director has an update.
Uh, thank you. Um, real quick, I just wanted to introduce everybody to, uh, I'm gonna bet you your last name is a Padego. Okay. Uh, Victoria says it better than I do. So Victoria, her last name. Um, she's our new planner for the department.
Hi.
We're at full staff. Um, we're happy to have her here. Uh, we'll be training her up as we move forward, and you'll be seeing a lot more of her at these meetings. Um, feel free to call on her and start asking questions as the best way to learn is through baptism of fire. So, um, I'm really happy to have her on board. Um, we all are.
Say your name again, please.
Padego is my last name.
Padego. Welcome.
Marcy's having fun.
Also, um, I just came back from, um, NCA FPM flood conference from last week. Um, you remember I spoke a few months ago about the new flood maps? I don't know what the delay is, but there's been another delay. Um, while ours are still considered preliminary for public review, they're not open yet for public comment or any admin, um, changes yet, but they expect that, I believe, in the fall now, where we expected it by now originally. So they're a few months behind. Um, but that should be coming forward. As I noted earlier, we are losing more of our flood zone um, through the modeling. So more houses are coming out of it in the county as far as the county jurisdictions are concerned. But the modeling is increased inside the municipalities, so some of the municipalities are actually having more houses enter into it. Um, they're also making changes to, um, insurance structures for flood. Um, and just recently, last year, North Carolina did open up for the ability to have privately insured flood insurance, not just through the NFIP. So that's also creating some market changes and stuff like that. That's none of really just highbrow stuff that we don't really deal with in our office, but it's something that if the public knows, just have them contact me if they have questions about their property related to flooding and whatnot, and we'll be happy to sit down with them. Those changes can be a little bit precarious, and with all this development going on and everybody buying new houses, they're always unsure of what's happening, we're happy to look it up for them. Um, keeping in mind that those maps may still be changed, but we'll still look at the preliminary data and see what they're looking at. Um, and as far as that, I believe we're hopefully be coming up with a few text amendments in the future, uh, probably by the mid to end of summer, just some cleaning up of the ordinance, um, and, and trying to tighten some things that there's some gaps and some inconsistencies. So we'll be trying to address those soon.
Including the dimensional standards table.
Including the dimensional standards table. And we may have to look at wireless communication towers. Um, but that's due to legislation constantly changing, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, Marcy. Uh, we're not showing any old business on the agenda.
Yeah, well, just, if I just recall, we didn't have any, ke, planning board cases for March, so there were no April commissioners hearings to follow up. So that's why there's no note as to outcomes, 'cause I know that Julie and others had asked for just outcomes, uh, but we didn't have any in April because there were no March cases.
But there will be an outcome letter sent out next Tuesday based on what the commissioners do on those hearings. Yes, ma'am.
Do you, would it be out of order when people come with these residential, um, requests for the planning department to suggest that they meet with the neighbors?
We do. Um, but our ordinance doesn't require it, so we, that's as far as we can go with it. We, we can't do pre-application meetings as a requirement, but we still ask people to do that. Um, we also ask them to have community meetings, um, especially the larger-scale ones. But our hands are pretty much tied in the fact that we can't require it. Um, now, some of the concerns about infrastructure and everything, and I'm working with Public Utilities and Economic Development to talk about some solutions there. Um, but there's nothing solidified yet. I do know the county's updating, uh, got plans to update the sewer, um, capacities uh, based on development, but I'm not sure where, what stage that's in. But I'm, I'm trying to get everybody before they even talk to us about these rezonings and stuff, to talk to engineering as well, to see if there's even future for them to be able to handle these subdivisions. So we're working at multiple angles of these people when they come for their applications to have some things done. But just to hammer that point home, I know the public's not here for this, but the rezoning has to happen for us to do a technical review. Because if they don't meet certain conditions from a rezoning standpoint, we can't approve the, the subdivision design. And to require them to come back three or four times for review and then come to y'all and they get shot down after they've done all that engineering, in my opinion, is a disservice to those people and developers, and the people who may sell their property to them hanging on a, waiting on our decisions. You know, this, in my opinion, this process speeds that along for everybody involved and saves everybody some money in the long run. So I just, public comment on that one.
Marcy, but it kind of proves a point from tonight, at least in my mind, that if they make an effort to get with the public and do a community involvement piece before they come here, that might cut them down some.
Right, and, and that was suggested to Mr. Arnt. It just was...
And if they have a plan. You know, if they, if it's, you know, like what we've got sitting in front of us now, that's...
Could we include, or could you all include that in staff analysis for us? That, that they've made a, been, they've made aware that a community involvement piece has, has occurred? Or...
So that we've advised them to do so?
Yeah.
But...
That they have.
Okay, we can always ask, but, um...
That's good information for, I mean, for me especially. It makes sense to me that if, if they've made an offer to the community and two people showed up, then all of a sudden, we sit in, there's 30 people to show up. Where's the disconnect? Why, did you not go and ask him all those questions before he came here? Because sometimes, as in tonight, our hands are kind of tied on what we can, can do and can't do.
We, we'll ask them if they do such a thing, and we'll try to include their, the synopsis that they have reached out to community engagement. Um, we can add an extra line in there, just community engagement in general, and we can report whether they did or didn't.
I think that's good, useful information.
He did engage in a, a small amount of community engagement, primarily with the folks that live in the, there's, there's a small strip that's own residential protected at the top of that parcel. Even though it's own residential protected, it's manufactured home park. I've never figured that out. But he did reach out to them over the weekend, face to face, and talked to them about, you know, the things, I think we talked about it briefly before the meeting, about, um, what his plans are for helping them out and giving them, you know, a broad timeframe and that kind of thing. He did not have a larger-scale outreach to other folks in the community.
Right, he didn't do a community meeting. He met with the people who were actually on the property he'd be buying.
Yeah.
Those are the people, the, the manufactured homes over there off that one side road.
People who actually reside on the parcel.
I wouldn't really, I mean, it, it's some kind of outreach, but it's not technically what we're talking about when we're talking about the, the neighboring community. So we'll, we'll look to see what we can do to, um, encourage, strongly encourage those kind of actions, and then we'll put some component into the, uh, staff report that recognizes that.
I mean, the difference between the two presentations was like...
Well, again, one was a conditional rezoning where we would consider that specific use. The other is a general rezoning, straight rezoning that considers all possible uses from the RM district into that property.
I, I, so I understand that part, but the, but the...
Level of preparedness.
The level of preparedness that, that he brought to the table was enough that, you know, that would, it calmed everybody. It kind of calmed things down a lot.
Well, and he seemed, he seemed surprised that all these things came up. And he said he was willing to work, and he wanted to talk with them and, and help. Had he done that before, he wouldn't have had 30 people here.
But there is a lot of concern in that area.
Yes, there is.
I, I've talked to, well, a lot of people have talked to me or called me, and there's a lot of concern about the infrastructure, about the emergency services situation and all that, you know?
Sure.
And, you know, about the loss of open and...
Yeah, we...
forested and farmland. And there's, there's a lot of people that make their living that are still off the land, and, you know, and there are a lot of people who have lived there, and they're, they're very concerned.
We, we've, we've discussed internally about trying to do a small-area plan for that southwestern quadrant coming up I-73 there that would address some of those other issues a little bit more in detail than what our current land use plan does or our UDO. Um, however, a lot of their concerns and stuff, you know, we don't have, yeah, for instance, roads. Counties don't deal with roads, period. For us to sit there and say they have to do something, that, as, as far as we can go is like saying they have to pave this road to get to that property. That's what we can do. But I can't do anything about accesses onto 220. Um, even DOT, we could put in our land use plan that we would like service roads. Those service roads still have to have some type of point to get onto that highway, and it's always gonna be a bottleneck. And unfortunately, we have no jurisdictional authority over that, but the public gets tired of hearing that, so, I mean, I, I, and their frustration is justifiable. The state doesn't have the money to deal with it. We don't have the money to deal with it or the authority. So we, we can understand their frustrations. The best we can do, like I said, with that small-area plan, is develop some ways that we would be able to bridge the gap between us and the state to,